September 23rd, 2025 at 6:30 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber, which has been duly noticed in two places, including the city's website in accordance with the requirements of RSA 91A. The prayer will be offered by our wonderful legislative manager, Donna Graham, and Alderwoman Kelly will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, oh God, with the spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance, please.
Alderman O'Brien.
Present.
Alderwoman Timmons. Alderman Moran. Alderman Thibodeau.
Here.
Alderman Govea.
Here.
Alderman Lopez. Alderman Sullivan.
Here.
Alderman Clemens. Alderman Senate.
I am here. I'm participating remotely due to illness. I am alone in the room and I can hear everybody in the chamber.
Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderman Tebow.
Here.
Alderman Clee.
Here.
Alderman Dab.
Present.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Here.
President Will Shire.
Here.
You have 11 members present and three, four absent.
Thank you. Also joining us this evening is Corporation, sorry. Also joining us this evening is Mayor Jim Donchus and Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton. Tonight, we have a presentation on library renovation scenarios, and I would like to recognize the library director, Jennifer McCormick.
Jennifer McCormick, library director. Thanks, everyone, for making yourselves available tonight. We're really excited to be here with our architects and with Keith Kelly from Harvey Construction to talk about the renovation options for the library. And tonight, actually, the Chair of my Board, Linda Laflamme, is going to introduce us.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. I'll be quick because I know the main attraction is coming up, but I wanted to give you a recap of how we got to this place. In an effort to be more proactive about our aging buildings' needs, back in 2022, we did a facility study, and the results were pretty grim. Significant attention and repairs were needed to the building infrastructure, the envelope, and more. Sixteen to nineteen million dollars' worth of repairs, and that was just base-level fixes. To do a total upgrade, it was projected at that time to be twenty-three to twenty-nine million dollar range. And when we presented the result to you, you asked us, well, do we need that much space? What about starting fresh? Would it be more affordable? Spoiler alert. So to answer those questions, we undertook our current space needs assessment. And as we shared with you in June, we learned that the fifty-seven thousand square feet range, which is what we currently have, is the right amount of space for the city's needs. But as that space stands now, it's not allocated as efficiently as it could be or focused on what a modern library patron needs out of its building. So tonight, Ben is going to recap the four options for reallocating that space, as well as the cost estimates for each, which I know is what you've been waiting for. Now, based on public input, staff input, trustee discussions, we've identified two front-runners. Renovating the current building and renovating part of the building and replacing the rest with a new addition. Both of these would achieve our goals of better serving our patrons and safeguarding the library's legacy for the future, and they'd do so with less environmental impact and expense than a new building would require. But tonight, we want to hear your impressions. And for that reason, Ben's going to present all four of the options. And also tonight, we'd like to invite you to form a joint building committee between the Board of Aldermen and the library trustees, similar to what's in the city charter for fire, police, DPW. Because it's going to be expensive, whatever we decide to do, but it will be more expensive in both dollars and loss service to the city if we wait until we have no choice, because maybe one of the building's aging systems has failed, and that's going to require us to close in the middle of the winter because there's no heat. Or the leaks will cause more damage, we may have to close because of that. Heat transfer out through the 1970s windows and walls are just going to send our energy costs even higher. Rather than spend the money on that, we could spend the money getting the building modernized, getting something new that will help the city even more. So that's why I feel it's important that we try to work together. We need to do something to be proactive, to safeguard this multifaceted public asset for the future. And if we work together, combining our expertise, Alderman Dowd and all his many school projects, our expertise and our funds, I'm sure we can find a way forward. So, without further ado, Ben from Design Lab would like to show you what we've been working on.
Excellent. Thank you, Linda. Thank you. Good to be back this evening. Hello, everyone. I can't believe it was June when we were here last. Happy Fall. I think, I don't quite have control to advance the slides just yet. Is there something I need to do?
Sometimes the mouse works better than that. I think the batteries die on that.
It worked last time, but it's not working now. Let's see if this works. Oops. Let's see. It's not working.
I think you sort of have to point it at the front. You have to point it to the front, yeah.
Well, he's getting it to work, he's just not in the right location.
I can't see the mouse.
Yeah.
Oh, there she, okay. Yeah? Let's see what I can do. I don't know if I can make this full screen for you all.
Project down the bottom right-hand corner.
Yeah.
Say it again.
Down the bottom right-hand corner.
See where it says there's a screen showing? In the middle, down to the right.
Keith, help me out.
Down, down, right there.
That's, no, that's not it.
No, that's just the, that's just the display.
Sorry, everyone. There, there it is. There it is. We'll get there. All right, that's better. And then let's see if I can just advance with the arrows. Will that work? All right, so this should work. So this is what we intend to review with you all this evening, about thirty, forty minutes or so. Go through an introduction, discuss process, program, touch on the site strategies that we talked about back in June, the proposed designs for each of those buildings on the site, and then the preliminary cost estimate that Keith and his team at Harvey helped prepare. So this is our team, just myself and Keith here this evening. In terms of our process, we've been at this since about February. We last saw you all at the beginning of the summer, where we did an overview of what we knew so far and discussed the site strategies. Since then, we've been advancing the proposed design for the buildings on each of those sites and developing the preliminary cost estimates for them. And we're now in this vision phase where we're packaging everything together as sort of a final document for the library and for all of you. In terms of our outreach, we had a number of focus groups back in the late winter and early spring with the groups you see on screen here, with some key takeaways from each of those. One of the main things that we heard at the time, which I think I shared with you last time, was how great of a location the library is currently in, with its proximity to Main Street and downtown and walkable and adjacent to parking and the river. But at the same time, there's a lot of opportunities and needs that were outlined as well. We also toured the building with staff, getting a better understanding of how they all work and what they need to do their jobs and offer the programs that they do, and cataloged every square foot of the building and how it's currently used. So I recognize that's small on screen, but that's, that's okay. Point being is we have a very good, clear understanding of how the space is currently used. And as Linda just mentioned, and as we touched on back in the summertime, what we learned was there's not the most efficient use of space in the current configuration. As departments have grown or gotten smaller over the years, they've kind of moved from one spot to the next, which is very common and, but ultimately results in a pretty inefficient building. So even though we have sixty thousand gross square feet of space, only about thirty-two-ish is currently actively used as net usable space. We also did an initial round of community outreach at that time, basically asking high-level kind of questions to the community, you know, what is it that you want your library to be able to do, a summary of which you see on screen. We did this both in person in the lobby of the library itself. We hosted an online website with online survey. We got nearly three hundred results. So we got a pretty good cross-section of input from different folks in different ways. I won't go through all of this in detail, but this is just a snapshot of some of the feedback that we received as part of that initial community outreach process. And another slide here, again, was sort of one of those big, big, sort of big-picture, you know, thirty, thirty thousand-foot level questions, you know, what do you want your library to do, or what should a modern library be, some of the feedback that we received at that time. A summary of existing assets and limitations, as I mentioned, the location and its proximity to downtown, we heard over and over again how ideal that is. We heard over and over again how wonderful the library staff is in all that they do and all the programs that they offer. We heard a lot about the existing limitations in the building, from building systems to safety concerns and others. So wanted to touch base on, oh, sorry, before I do that, I just wanted to, Linda just did a good recap here, but, you know, all of this programming information is on top of the technical assessment that we did a couple of years ago. And this is just to reinforce what we learned of, as we sort of concluded that effort back in 22. Building is obviously over fifty years old at this point. It is incredibly inefficient from an energy use perspective. Buildings of this era commonly are. There's no insulation in the walls. Many of the windows are single pane. There's a lot of accessibility issues, a lot of building code issues. All of those codes have evolved significantly over the past fifty years. So there's a lot of updating that needs to be done to bring it into, to the current I didn't share this part with you all last summer, but we wanted to touch on it tonight, and that is just what is, what is the library of the future or the evolving library, and what does that mean for a public library? You know, through our work with both public libraries and higher ed libraries, you know, we've gained a lot of knowledge about what folks in different types of communities want their library to be able to do for them. And it's important to note that libraries of this era, like your own, we often refer to them as warehouses for books. That's what they were in the sixties and seventies when they were designed. They were very inward-facing. All of the buildings you see on here, we've worked on, many of them are libraries, they're all mid-century, and you could easily imagine your library, you know, being up there as part of this array. But it's important to note that while libraries were about sort of this inward-facing collection of books, this diagram here is, is sort of focused on individual versus group work on that vertical bar, and then consumption versus creation on that horizontal bar. And it's meant to imply that, you know, in this era of library planning in the sixties and seventies, it was very much about the individual consuming information from books. Now, in addition to that, libraries are so much more. They're about creating, they're about group work, they're about collaborating, they're about exploring. That's not to say that those older activities are not still important, they absolutely are, but they're just supplemented with many, many more things, from, from podcast studios to maker spaces to digital labs, even music spaces, meeting spaces, performance spaces, all of that type of stuff. So we use the analogy that, you know, libraries used to be about going to a grocery store and taking ingredients home with you and working on them at home by yourself. Now, libraries are much more like the kitchen. You're actually creating, you're engaging with others, and it's much more a communal experience. And just like the kitchen is often referred to as the heart of the home, the library is, is the heart of its community. And what that means is that, you know, library patrons are no longer just individual readers, but they're also learners, often in group settings. We also know through our work that many different people come to use libraries for many different reasons, and you want to be as inclusive to all of those different types of learners and people as possible. And what that means is that there's a much larger variety of types of spaces in today's libraries. You see an array on screen here. Certainly, a book collection is still a very fundamental part of a library, but as I said earlier, it's supplemented with many other types of program spaces to support different uses. And that was really exciting for us to, to, to hear from the community, because much of what I just said about what we've learned through our other library work was reiterated from the community and what we heard through all of our outreach. So this is a snapshot of what we heard was desirable in terms of program spaces from both the community, staff members, the focus groups, all of the work we did. Certainly, there's a, there's a lot of desire and need to improve youth services and expand youth services. Staff spaces need a lot of improvement as well. In programming and gathering spaces, there's a lot of desire for that type of space and an increase in that type of space, particularly in the meeting room size from, from individual meeting room spaces to small groups, but also a large assembly space. There's a need to create a sort of similar theater-type use, but also a larger assembly space for meetings up to, you know, a hundred or maybe a hundred and fifty people. So I think you saw this slide last time we were here. Existing space use summaries on the left with that sixty thousand gross square foot number and thirty-one thousand net. What we've learned through our space analysis and all this programming work is that we need a net number of thirty-four to thirty-eight thousand square feet, but by, by a more efficient use of space, we think we can achieve that in around a sixty thousand gross square foot building, which is what the library is, is now. So in the proposed, you know, new schemes, we're targeting that sixty thousand square foot number. Very quickly, you'll remember obviously where the library, of course, is now. We are exploring different strategies on the existing site and the adjacent parking lot site. So these slides should look familiar. We saw these back at the beginning of the summer. But we're looking at these four strategies, you know, renovation of the current building and its current footprint, an addition where we demolish a portion of that existing building and build new, a replacement scheme where we demolish the existing building in its entirety and build new on that site, and then the relocation scheme, which is building on the adjacent parking lot site. So I'll go through these pretty quickly as well. It's going to be a lot to absorb, and there's, you know, multiple floor plans for each strategy, but I will say at this point that there's still ample opportunity to refine where a program is located within any of these strategies. So, and we, you know, we've got some of that feedback already from the staff that, you know, none of these are quite perfect yet at this feasibility stage, and, you know, that's not surprising. We haven't had a ton of interface with them back and forth. But there are some key differences in each of them. So, starting with the renovation, I'm going to start by saying that there's a bit of a departure from where we were in 2022. At that time, you know, we hadn't gone through this programming exercise, so we didn't quite know the level of intervention that would be required within the library. And at that point, it was really a technical assessment. We were focused on the building systems and the envelope, not necessarily the library programming. In this renovation scheme, and Keith can talk about this more when we get into deestimating, we are proposing a full gut renovation. And what I mean by that is we are going down to the structure. All of the existing envelope with all of its challenges is being, is proposed to be removed. All of the interior, you know, non-load-bearing walls are being proposed to be removed, and all of the building systems, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, all of that is, is being removed from the original, you know, the original construction, and we're coming back with all new systems. So think about us, just, we're just going back to the structural core of the building with this scheme. So, in this scheme, on the main level, as you enter, we are expanding youth services. Those are the green tones on the right. We are bringing a meeting suite of, a variety of meeting spaces up to this level. And one of the key things that we're proposing to do is to create a new vertical circulation, basically cut a hole into the existing floor with a new stair and a new elevator and really create a much more intuitive wayfinding experience. You can come in, you can see down to the lower level, you know that there's other program down there, and you don't have to kind of double back to the stair that's there now. The lower level on, oops. You'll see these up in all of these schemes, and, and none of these are specific to any of the spaces. They're only to suggest this is what the new library could start to feel like if it is all renovated. You could have a completely different, you know, architectural experience. The character of the building could be entirely different, new finishes, new lighting, and it could really start to feel like a new building, even though it is a renovation. So just some examples of children's spaces and meeting spaces. On the lower level of this scheme, we're proposing to bring the collection down to this level and locate it on the lower level and expand, I should say consolidate, all of the staff spaces into a suite. Those are what those purple, purple tones are. On the lowest level, the basement, if you will, we're really not introducing any program down here, but we are suggesting that there could be an entrance into the library from this level. We'll be talking about that in the other schemes, but if the Riverwalk gets developed further, there's an opportunity to really engage that Riverwalk, and we'll talk about that more in the next scheme a little bit more, but could there be an entry to the library from this side of the building? In terms of that new stair, you know, this is a renovation that we did down in Providence, similar era building. We cut a new hole into the building and we created a new stair and created a very clear orienting device within an existing building. And again, just sort of suggesting that it could feel completely new, even though it's an existing building with new finishes and new systems. So here's a summary of that renovation scheme. Maintaining the existing building structure, as I said, creating new exterior building expression. So what I mean there, and what we mean there, is that all of the brick would go away, and we could really reconceive what this building looks like from the outside. And obviously, there's a lot of conversations to have there. I'll keep, I'll keep moving here in the interest of time, but as I said, we're, gross square footage is maintained, of course, because it's the existing building, but we are, through more efficient use of space, we've, we've gained about three to four thousand net usable square feet. Okay, so the addition scheme. Any questions on the renovation? Or should I keep going through these and do questions at the end? Okay. So the addition scheme. You can see in the kind of blue tones and the dashed line, this is what we're proposing to demolish of the existing building here and create a new addition, really with the goal of creating a new entry experience and a new sequence for how you arrive and enter the building. So unlike the previous scheme, we've got collections front and center on this scheme. The, the books and the library collection are the first thing that you see. Had a lot of conversation with, with the community at the last workshop about that. And it's important to note that between collections, meeting space, and youth services, we don't really have enough room to create, to put all of those on the main level. So that's why we're kind of experimenting different ways to, to locate them. But that's not to say, as, hopefully as this process progresses, we won't revisit those arrangements and figure out what's, what's best. But in this scheme, we've got collection up on the main level. We have a similar meeting suite in the, in the red and orange tones there, but what we've created here through this addition is a new sort of entry sequence coming from the parking. What we've also created is this sort of vertical, sort of slice, if you will, through the building to get you from the entry level down to the lowest level against, against the river. Again, just some inspiration and flavor for what future spaces might feel like. These, these images are what that type of sort of vertical stair could feel like. It's, you know, it's more than just a stair, it's an opportunity to orient yourself, it's a sort of community gathering space, and it's a way for patrons to kind of clear, clearly and easily see where they're going and where the spaces are so they can get to them easily. So on the lower level here, this is where in this scheme, we're proposing youth services. Had a lot of conversations, again, with, with the community about that, you know, getting, getting families and caregivers and children with strollers down to this level. That's, you know, that's often a challenge, and is it the right move to put youth services down here? But we wanted to explore it as a, as an opportunity. And then on the other side of the lower level here, we've got staff consolidated alongside some meeting space and a dedicated room for the special collection. Again, just some inspiration. And on the lower level, what we're proposing in this scheme, because we've got a little bit more flexibility with the footprint of the addition, we could potentially create program use down here or a community space on this level. And one of the things that we heard a lot from the community that would be interesting and, and people got excited about is, is there an opportunity for an outdoor program space that's adjacent to the river as sort of an extension of the library for outdoor programming? You can imagine children's programs coming down there in nice weather, you could imagine events, maybe even the book sale spills outside. So that's something that we were exploring in this scheme. This is one of our projects, obviously a different era of building, but that the opportunity for outdoor program space at both the existing terrace level as well as the river level for your site, I think is really exciting, and the community certainly sees the opportunity there as well. So, highlights of this scheme, I think I touched on all of those. We can come back to any of these if we need to, but let's keep going. In this scheme, with the ability to sort of shape the addition footprint, we're actually yielding a little gross, less gross square footage, but more net square footage, just with the ability to, to kind of make that footprint as efficient as we can to serve the program uses that we need. Okay, so the replacement scheme. That, just as the name suggests, and as we've talked about, the existing building is demolished in its entirety, and we are building, proposing to build new on the existing site. Now, you know, the footprint could, could evolve, it could take on any number of, of shapes, but we're picking up on sort of the natural bend of the site and the river. That's what this footprint is, is sort of suggestive of. On the main level, it is entirely collection. We are proposing, in this scheme and the previous, actually all, all of the schemes, sort of two entries, kind of getting one closer to parking and one closer to the plaza. Similar idea with a stair that kind of is an orienting device to navigate down through the building. Again, just some inspiration for, for what some of the spaces might start to feel like. Youth services is on the intermediate level with staff co-located here. One of the interesting ideas with this particular scheme is, again, with the new construction and the ability to manipulate the, the building footprint in the envelope, you know, we're proposing a sort of outdoor reading garden for, for youth services and just general use that's sort of on the rooftop of the floor below, sort of overlooking, overlooking the river. And on this floor, again, because it's, it's all new construction, we can kind of create a larger, lower level. The lowest level in this scheme is a meeting suite with that idea of that, those types of spaces having the ability to spill out, spill out onto some sort of event terrace. So a summary of that scheme. And not unlike the last scheme, the gross number has come down And not unlike the last scheme, the gross number has come down a little bit, and we're just around 35, 36,000 net, net usable square feet. Okay, so the relocation scheme. So this is on the adjacent site. I think I mentioned this when we were here last. You know, through our initial analysis of this site, our preliminary takeaway was that, given the amount of space available on that site, the footprint would only yield enough square footage. So we actually have to have three full stories here. And unlike the previous schemes, this is sort of like a bottom-up approach, if you will, because you enter on the first level and then go up to two and three, where on the previous schemes, you enter on the upper level from parking and then work your way down. So this, this, just given the nature of the site, sort of sits, sits up higher as it relates to the river. So in this scheme, we've sort of got this entry pavilion, if you will, that's suggested, you know, it's, it's, it's adjacent to parking. It's suggesting that there could be another entry that, you know, faces towards the river. But obviously, there need to be a lot more site analysis and, and consideration with how you enter the building. Meeting spaces are located on this floor. We are, similarly to the previous schemes, thinking about the sort of outdoor terrace idea. The only difference is that you're up higher, you know, on the riverfront. You're up, you know, basically at the parking level now, whereas in the previous schemes, you were down at, at the Riverwalk level. Collection is located predominantly on the second floor alongside additional meeting room space. And staff and youth services are up on the third, third level. We are thinking in this scheme that there would be a partial or potentially full basement, you know, beneath the patron levels for all of the, you know, storage and mechanical and that type of, that type of space. So here's that, here's that summary. And I think as, as Linda hinted at in her introduction, you know, this one's interesting to think about from a, from an energy and embodied carbon perspective, because you're, we're demolishing the entire existing library and its structure and all of that carbon and energy that went into that building 50 years ago. You're, you're losing that, so to speak, and then you're investing in an entirely new building with that carbon footprint. So it's, it's interesting to think about from that, from that perspective. And similar net numbers and gross numbers from the previous, from the previous schemes. So this, this chart here, this is the existing building with where we started, with the sort of net to gross numbers. What we're proposing in our program analysis here in the second bar, and then the four schemes that I just walked through. You know, in round numbers, as I said at the beginning, we're hovering around a, you know, 60,000 gross square foot number and are trying to maximize the net number to 36,000 to 38,000, 39,000 square feet. So we presented all of these schemes in a second community workshop over in the summer. We got a lot of feedback from folks, both in that meeting as well as with another series of boards that were in the lobby. Got a lot of comments, a lot of commentary, many, many relevant comments, some not so relevant. We tried to synthesize those into the sort of key takeaways that you see on screen there. You know, ultimately, there wasn't really a clear preference, plus you. Certainly, some people had preferences, but, you know, they, they were kind of a wide array. So there wasn't really a clear frontrunner, so to speak, but at the same time, a lot of helpful feedback. We also got some feedback from some of the staff, not all, about program arrangements. And I think the big takeaway there that I mentioned was, you know, any of these, all of these need more work from a program perspective. You know, we've only had one back and forth with staff. If this project were to progress forward, we'd have a lot more back and forth with staff to really nail down the key program arrangement. There was a slight preference towards the arrangement in the replacement scheme, but that, again, was just sort of initial reactions. One of the key, key takeaways, both from community and staff, was, you know, how does, how does a library continue to operate and provide services, you know, during construction? There was a lot of questions about that, and of course, we didn't have answers at the time. But that's certainly something that would need to be seriously considered for any of these. So before we get into the, the sort of, the cost estimates for each of these, we have developed some preliminary renderings. These are focused more on the renovation and addition schemes, based on what Linda said at the beginning. But there's a huge opportunity to really change the first impression, the sort of insular inward-facing building, to create something that's much more approachable and welcoming. So this is an initial, initial rendering. Could be the addition scheme, it could be the renovation scheme, creating a new entry towards parking, completely reimagining the exterior expression of the building. You know, the, the opportunities are, really are quite extensive. If we go down to the existing structural core and build back, I mean, we can clad the building in any number of ways. We can introduce glass in all sorts of different locations. And this is just sort of starting to hint at what that might start, what that might start to feel like. You can also see that we're, we're suggestive of a better connection. There is a lot of grade from parking down to the river, but that could certainly be approved upon from what's there now. From that river experience, right now, I mean, it's, it's loading, it's staff parking, it's very much back of house. The library, you know, I think it's fair to say, kind of turns back on the river in the, in the 60s and 70s when it was designed and constructed. It's very much an opportunity now to reconsider that, that relationship. So again, just sort of suggestive of what that could feel like with some sort of event terrace, program terrace that sort of extends out from the building at that lower level, could connect directly to a Riverwalk. We can introduce glass to the existing facade. We can create an entry. We can create more views into the building to, to activate the riverfront and really create a nice, engaging community space. Inside, from a first impression perspective, the building, even though it's only two floors now, it's pretty tricky to navigate because you come in, you gotta kind of do the U-turn back to the stair. You don't quite know where you are. We think there's immense opportunity to improve that. And again, instead of this inward-facing building with hardly any views out, we think we can dramatically change that. So this is sort of that addition idea with the slice through the building, so that you enter, you immediately see what's below you and have clear views to different aspects of the library spaces, from, from a children's level or youth services to the stacks. Everything is very, very intuitive and clear to navigate, and the architectural expression is, is completely different from, from what folks are used to. And then lastly, you know, the perimeter of the building. I keep saying this, but there's a lot of opportunity to correct the issues there in terms of the thermal inefficiencies, all of the water leaking, all of those conditions. If we go back to the structural core, we can come back and re-clad this in any number of ways. But this very sort of opaque condition could selectively become much more transparent. So even though the geometry of the existing building remains the same, just where glasses versus solid walls and types of programs are located where you can really create a completely different experience. So those are some just initial conceptual, you know, ideas and renderings. In terms of costs, I know that's the main event for this evening. So Keith's gonna do the hard part, not, not really. But Keith and his team at Harvey have been instrumental, both in this effort, but also back in 2022. The Harvey team knows the building as well as we do, and they helped us craft, craft the estimates that we're about to share with you.
So good evening. Keith Kelly with Harvey Construction. As Ben has indicated, we were involved three years ago with this initial assessment. We wanted to re, reacquaint ourselves with the effort that was done in 2022 for what the scope was at the time. Numbers that were thrown out early on, as low as 12 to 14 million dollars in construction costs. That was to, as Ben had indicated, to basically stabilize the systems in the building that was there. The considerations for the reconstruction and re-cladding and, and reconfiguration was not addressed in what we called the base scope at the time. It really was a reaction to the assessment of what the needs were for the building and the systems. Then we identified enhanced scopes and then optional scopes. And some of what you're gonna, what you've seen tonight includes those enhanced and optional scopes. So you really have to look at the whole slide and all the way across to say that we are somewhere between as low as 16, but that's not anything you've seen tonight, and as high as 29. So it's really just, I'm trying to get, set the, the stage for where we were in 2022 and the, the goal that we were trying to accomplish at that time and what the potentials costs could be fast forward to 2025. I'll just, anecdotally, I'll say that we carried an escalation cost to get us to 2025. Unfortunately, we did not see that low of an escalation since 2022. Actually, it's carrying right, right now, it's about 8% since 2022, which is on par with what I would say a normal industry, what we call building cost indices, as published by Engineering News Record. It's a rag that I geek out on on occasion. It basically takes analysis across the country and assigns an escalation specific to the building industry. That runs anywhere between 2 to 5% on any given year over year. We, we projected an 8, a 5% in two years' worth of escalation in this estimating effort. If we had a crystal ball, we would have said it was 8, and that's what it's showing up as today. So we're now escalating in these new numbers that Ben will share. And we can, we can summarize at the end at, again, a 5%, because right now, we are 2.5% over last year. So I would say we've normalized. The pandemic has done its damage. We're still 35% over 2020. Let's hope we don't go back there. But that's the kind of numbers that we've carried in these new numbers that are coming up on these schemes.
Thank you. So looking at the schemes that we just presented, starting with the renovation. I apologize, it's a little, a little small for you guys to see, but we're starting with what we refer to as the direct construction costs. And we've broken, broken those into four primary buckets. Demo and site work, all the way at the bottom. Envelope and structural work in that second tier. Interior fit out in the lighter blue, and then building systems, MEPFP in that, in that top bit. So if we were to spend money on direct constructions cost this very moment, that is the anticipated number of 17.5. But of course, there's more to construction than just the direct construction cost, and we're not ready to start construction yet. So adding in the escalation that Keith just described, adding in other components of, of construction overhead as well as a 20% design and estimating contingency, that's that next number that you see, the 24.8 to the 26.7. So that projects us out to construction, starting in two years. It has, as I said, that 20% contingency for both design and estimating, for all of the things that we just don't know about now, as well as typical overhead, general conditions, general requirements, that, that type of stuff. So that's the construction cost. So on top of that, we have all of the soft costs. So very simply, what we did is, based on our, our knowledge of the industry and certainly Keith's, is we use multipliers of 35 to 40% on top of those 2028 construction numbers to get us to a total project cost number. So that purple bit at the top includes everything on the right. We have an additional 10% owner contingency in that number. We have a 4% fixtures, furnishings, and equipment number to, to add all new equipment and furniture into the library. We have anticipated costs for an owner's project manager. Certainly, professional architecture and engineering fees are in there. And the other big, the other big component of that is any moving costs, any storage cost to store the collection, potentials cost to fit out another space for a temporary library. There's a lot of what-ifs there in that component, but in that purple, in that purple number, we are anticipating, anticipating that need. So that's sort of the structure for, for how we've developed these estimates. And we've got a lot of, a lot more detail that got us to the, to construction numbers. So the renovation scheme, you know, with soft costs, we're anticipating a total project cost of 34 to 39 million. You know, that's a big number, and that's a big range. But at this stage of the project, with all of the unknowns and all of the conversations that have not been had yet, we think it's, you know, an appropriate range for this stage of a construction or a feasibility study, I should say. Looking at the addition scheme, it's structured just, just the same way, with the same sort of progression of, of costs. A little bit more demo work, a little bit more site work, because we are demolishing a portion of the existing building. A little bit more structural work, because we are proposing a new addition. But as that, as that translates up to the top, it's a 38 to 44 million number. Replacement goes even further. And the big difference there, even though they, they start as pretty modest differences down at the bottom, there's more demo work, we're getting rid of the entire building. There's more site work, because we have to prepare for a new building. There's a lot more structural work, because we're building new foundations, we're building a new structure. So those numbers kind of create that higher direct construction cost, and then those get escalated up from there. And then lastly, the relocation scheme. Keith can talk, talk more about this here in a moment. But that is the most involved project. It is the most involved cost. It's largely due to not doing all the demolition that I just described. But also, we have to bring all new utilities to that site. One of the benefits of the existing sites, even though all of the building systems need to be redone, the utilities are there, and we can, we can pick them up without having to do that much site utility work. So that's the summary. Keith can talk a little bit more about just some high-level takeaways for each of these, and then we can hook it up to questions.
Yeah, when we first evaluated and looked at these different options, you'd think, well, replacement and relocation, why aren't they closer? Why aren't they comparable? But a lot of what drove that was the need for the infrastructure, as Ben had indicated. We're not able to utilize the existing facility, the existing site, its utilities. So that drives up the site work costs of things. And again, if you think about the purple bar, that's the soft cost, that's a direct multiplier. So once you increase your hard construction costs, the soft costs proportionally go with it. The renovation scheme is obviously the most, is the fastest project because of the, the lack of site work and demolition work and all those things that add duration. So anytime you can make the project go faster, you're obviously going to save money, time and money. They're connected to each other. So the addition was kind of a close second in our mind relative to that, because we still had the infrastructure there, we still had the components as, as part of that process, is maintaining some of the facilities and entrances of the existing building, but adding on the new facility to give it that facelift on, on a portion of it. Replacement, I think, at the end of the day, is, even though it's not the most expensive in the options that we evaluated, it's probably the most challenging from a relocate, a demolishing and having to rebuild in that existing space presents its challenges relative to site work. Working in that slope that's, as Bennett indicated, is, is challenging up against the river. And it also would impact the, the facility's use and occupants the most, because they really are not able to occupy any part of the building, because we're taking it all down, whereas any of the other options, to a certain extent, we could phase it to what we've done in other projects for, for the city and coordinate that with the, with the users and the staff. So that's kind of the high level, what things that triggered us if you look at those numbers and say, well, why is that as such? But essentially, that's the ranges that we've indicated for each of those. I think that's it.
That's it? Yeah, happy to take any questions.
Okay, Alderman Dowd?
Yeah, I got a few notes, as I'm sure Keith expected. And I don't think we need to solve every one of them. But the first question I have is, is have you anticipated possibly doing the first two agendas in a phased approach? is, is have you anticipated possibly doing the first two agendas in a phased approach? Because if you're looking at bonding costs, you know, if that can be spread over time, it's less impactful on our long-range plan. You want me to go through them and then?
However you want to do it.
Yeah. The other thing that came up was security cameras and additional outdoor lighting. Is that included in the design?
I would say the answer is yes, relative to the contingencies we're carrying. As Bennett indicated, we've got a 20% design and construction estimating contingency. So at this stage, those are the buckets that those would fall into.
Okay.
And I'll hit into the, the phasing just while I have the mic. The, absolutely, we've investigated that. There's always opportunity at this early stage, and what we're, what we're presenting and estimating is not getting to that level, because we don't have the level of documents to get there. But certainly, part of that discussion at that 52-week duration is to be able to take advantage of not having the whole space, giving some sense of operations for the existing facility and staff. And then obviously, to your point, the funding on the bonding side of things.
Yeah, and as far as using the existing library while construction's going on, as you well know, we've, we've done this with schools over the last several years and quite successfully. So that, that's possible. The other thing is, in whatever we do, I think we ought to have space in the plan for a separate outdoor, the new restrooms we're talking about. And you can talk to Tim Cummings later about that. We don't want to get into it right now, but just leave space for it. It's not connected to the library necessarily, but on the, on the site. The other thing is, I assume, the current insulation on the building is terrible. So if I understand you correctly, you're replacing all outside walls, replacing all the glass with higher R-value glass.
Yep.
I would also say on the first floor, anything that's available ought to be, not bullet resistant, but it ought to be so you can't smash it. It's, I forget the name of the term of the glass we use, but it's, so you can break it, but it won't.
Yeah, high-impact or something along those lines. Yep.
The other thing is, are you replacing the roof on all of these options? And the reason I say that is, if you're replacing the roof, do we want to make it so it could take solar, so that we could have solo panels that run the electricity of the building, which would be a savings downstream?
Sure. Yes, that absolutely can be accommodated.
Okay.
And I'd probably venture to guess that if there's a ballasted roof there, there's already a load there that could accommodate even, I wouldn't go as far as saying meet today's code 50 years later, but certainly there's an existing dead weight that's on the existing structure that's.
As we know, the panels are getting lighter as well. The other thing is, in this, in all your construction, are you taking into account that we've got money to renovate that park outside the library? And can we do that without impacting construction?
The, the current park, is that, or the, or the riverfront? I think there's two, the Plaza?
Plaza.
Yeah.
Plaza.
That's a separate, we have monies in there for landscaping and engagement, but not?
I'm not talking about the monies. We have the monies to do the renovation, but can we do the renovation before you get into construction?
I'm sure we could work around that. I would be, it all depends, I guess, on your solution, too, because if you take down the building, how does that interface?
Again, you want to meet with city staff on, on that.
Yep.
Let's see. Oh, and the other thing I have is, if you were talking about a new building, are you also, in those dollar figures, have the money to demo the old library?
Yes, we do.
Okay. So that's why it's expensive.
Yeah, and I can't figure out how to go back.
Okay.
If you can see there, the, the, whatever light green at the very bottom, demo and site work, it proportionally got bigger depending on which scenario it was. So the least amount of demo is on the first option, which is renovation. The most amount of demo is between replacement and relocation.
So those are my, my main concerns, questions, as you probably could figure out from my experience with you guys building several schools, that I may have smaller concerns, but that we can talk about them later.
Alderman Kelly?
Thank you. First, I just want to commend you for doing the work to talk to the community and really bring it in at every phase. It clearly shows up in the options, so thank you for that. I know I was part of one of the initial conversations, so kudos to that. Lots of really good stuff. I really liked the windows. It happened to be in the large print area last week, and I was like, why is there a brick wall where there should be a window? So I really liked opening that up, and that, that was my feeling. It was just, wow. I'm going to ask the sticky question. So I saw the people would like free parking, which is interesting, because that might be something that tried to go through this chamber a number of years ago. But parking in general, you didn't really address. And so I want to hear from you guys what you're thinking, because we have, in reconfiguring our downtown, done some really great work, but we have lost parking.
Right. And that's a very, that's a very fair question. The, you know, the relocation scheme, obviously, it's, it's built on the surface lot that, you know, primarily serves the library now. You know, so is that strategy just flip-flopped? Is, is parking put where the library is now and where the plaza is going to go? That's, that's one scenario. But we didn't, we didn't really have the opportunity or enough information to evaluate that further. You know, certainly, if you were to build on the current library site in either of the first three schemes, it leaves that adjacent parking lot available, either as a surface lot or to be developed into whatever. Could be a parking deck, it could be some other development that has parking as part of it. But it's a very good, it's a very good question that we really haven't gotten to the bottom of in, in the relocation scheme.
Thank you. I, I think I have similar concerns around, like, getting people to a level two if they have strollers. I probably have the one, the youngest children in the chamber, so I have friends who still have kids in strollers. So I did think about that, but I did like how you opened in some ways closer to the parking lot.
Right.
Because as somebody who was not very mobile for a couple of years, it's a long walk.
We, oops, I go too far. Yeah, that idea, you know, this, well, this idea and the previous one of, as you just described, I mean, this idea of double entry, this, you know, something like this, I think, could be achieved through the renovation scheme, and, you know, ultimately wouldn't look just like this, but getting an entry that's closer to parking and to help navigate some of that grade, because there is almost six feet from the parking surface up to the first elevation of the, of the library, you know, creating that sort of secondary entry, I think would be a real benefit to folks, you know, just coming in from that direction, while still providing entry, you know, to the plaza. And it's Court Street, right? Court Street, yeah.
To the left, yep. Thank you.
Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Madam President. As we, right now, we have a, a library that's approximately 50 years old, and let's say we renovate it and everything. What would be the life expectancy of the current renovation structure?
That's a big, it's a, it's a great question. I mean, I think, you know, as, as we looked at, at new building systems, I think you could easily anticipate another 30 up to 50 years if it was renovated the way we're describing it. You know, the, the building structure is sound. The, the concrete structure that's there is sound. It's all this other stuff that needs to be addressed. And, and just as you design new buildings, they can be expected to have a, a life expectancy of, you know, 30, 30 years or so.
Yeah, I would just add to that, that typically any civic and project such as this, whether it be a library or a police station or a fire station or a school for that matter, you, the target is that 50-year mark, because there's always a great return on that bond as well, right? So that, that's the other side of it. It's material selection, it's level of quality, it's specifications. I would, that's the target. Ultimately, it's between the design team and, and the construction team to make sure that we execute on that.
Follow-up, if I may?
Yes.
So what I'm hearing is, if we renovate it, be about the same as a new structure, approximately.
Plus or minus, depends on the rounding.
Right, I can appreciate that, yeah. And one more follow-up, Madam President.
O'Brien?
Seeing in the architect's conception and drawings there, and like the picture that we're looking at right now, a lot of ga, uh, glass. And one of the problems we hear with the library is, like, the, it's just brick walls and, you know, cold weather comes radiating through and everything else like that. I know glass now has R-ratings and everything, but will it be that efficient? We do live in New England, you know, so.
Yeah, another great question. I mean, the design of curtain wall and glass systems has come a long way, and there's a lot of triple-glazed systems out there. Price points are coming down as they become more prevalent, so you can get very efficient U-values with glass. Whether it's this much glass versus another, you know, opaque envelope assembly, I think that's, that's, there's a lot more design to happen if this were to move forward, and we'd want to evaluate all of that with you. But we certainly think we could achieve all of the energy code requirements that the building code prescribes to us.
Okay.
With, with the renovated scheme.
Yeah, that's, makes me feel a little bit better, because then we would be replicating one of the problems that we currently have right now.
Yeah, that's.
You know, so we're trying to avoid the heat loss.
Absolutely. And you can make this a much tighter, thermally efficient building.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome. Alderman Jettie?
Thank you. So I like, you know, I like the, the fact that there would be a, well, I like the, the renovation choice, and I like the idea that there would be an entrance from the parking lot, because that's one of the complaints that we have now, is people, especially handicapped people, trying to get from the parking lot into the library building. I also like the, you know, the idea of reorienting the building towards the river, taking advantage of, of the, of the beautiful river that we have there and the dam and everything. But a couple of concerns, as, as you were talking about, you know, you talked about the large, you know, open spaces and, you know, these stairways. You know, you showed pictures of, you know, these stairways and this big, large, open area. And, and, you know, my, you know, I, I'm thinking of, you know, heating and cooling that large space, you know? I don't know if the, if the technology is such that you can handle that kind of a problem, but that, that's a concern I had. And the, the other concern was, I, I noticed there's a theater included, and, you know, right across the plaza, there's the Court Street Theater, you know, which is a theater space that, you know, I'm wondering, you know, could we avoid, could we save some money by taking advantage of an already existing theater? And, and the Court Street Building itself also, you know, when you talked about having to relocate while you're doing the construction, where, you know, where is all, where are all the library facilities going to go? And I'm thinking, you know, is it possible to use that building, you know, as a satellite library while this is all happening?
All excellent questions. I think, you know, I think that's one of the, one of the points of this evening's presentation, is that there's a lot of conversations to be had if any of these were to progress forward. You know, I didn't put a slide in the presentation specifically to this, but, I mean, this is concluding a feasibility study. It's sort of setting the stage for, for a, a design process for any one of these strategies. And that design process would easily be a year, if not longer, with some sort of joint, joint committee between library trustees and, and, and some of you all, where these types of conversations that we can get into in a lot more detail. Interesting question about the theater. I don't know that that came up in our conversations, but it's certainly something that we should, should explore, both in terms of, you know, do we want to duplicate that program space or not? And is that an opportunity to use as swing space during construction for sort of a satellite library?
Thank you.
Alderman Cle?
Thank you, Madam President. I know this is just a feasibility study, and while, like, the glass looks nice and so on, my ward is across the river, and Jacksonville condos are right across the street. And currently, they, they have had issues with lights being turned on at the library reflecting into their, into their windows and so on. So I see glass, I see sun reflecting across the way and so on. Is there, when we're doing a design and so on, is there a way of doing it such that you do not annoy anybody that's across the river and so? I, I know we're still in feasibility, I know this is not the design, but I want that to be taken into consideration, whatever we do, that it, you know, sun does reflect off glass.
Yeah, no, and I'm glad you mentioned that, because some of those folks, if I remember correctly, actually did come to one of our public meetings back in the 2022 effort. They didn't mention that specifically, but just the appearance of the libraries, you know, looking at it. So I think, absolutely, I mean, we'd want to look at that in detail during a design process. And, and again, all, and I know you read earlier, these are just like initial ideas to kind of do exactly what they're doing, you know, spurring conversations and questions and making sure we're taking everything into account.
May I just comment? Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that. As I said, I mean, typically, I would have never thought turning on an outside light at the library would have affected across the river.
Sure.
But it did. It was lighting up bedrooms, it was lighting up there at night when they were watching TV, and the library was really good about readjusting the lights and shutting them off at a certain time. So we just had to have a conversation, but thank you.
Anyone else? Alderman Tibado?
Mine's a quick one. I am curious, what is Friends Storage? I'm sure it's not as nefarious as it sounds.
We put the Friends there.
So the, there's a Friends of the Library organization that facilitates a annual book sale, which is, is a major fundraiser for the library. Sorry, I didn't describe this better, but as a result of that, they, they have a lot of storage space to store all of those books, organize them, get them ready for that annual book sale. They've got a good chunk of space in the library now, and we want to make sure that we're providing that in the future.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no one, thank you very much for being here this evening. Appreciate your presentation.
Thank you.
Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion that the Special Board of Alderman Meeting be adjourned.
Motion is to adjourn by roll call. The clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Tibado?
Yes.
Alderman Gobea?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderman Senate?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Tebow?
Yes.
Alderman Cle?
Yes.
Alderman Dow?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
President Wiltshire?
Yes.
You have 13 yeas and no yeas.
That motion carries, and we are adjourned at 7:38 PM. Thank you, everyone.